Okay.
Do you think we're all coming? We're coming to the quarter. This is a special meeting, we're only going to be discussing the questions posed to us by PDS regarding our proposed changes we submitted for 2072. Um, this is a very specific meeting with specific responses to Cliff Strong's questions, so I'll open it up to public comment, because this is necessary, but remember it's a special meeting, you can only talk on that issue alone. Does anybody have any public comment questions before we begin? Okay, did you get that quarter?
I think so. You got it?
No.
No? Well, send it. Uh, I think so, send it.
I think also the email you sent about meetings.
Just come in now, Steve.
Okay.
It was a public.
I have a little bit of a high end.
Okay, I make my.
Yeah.
Yes.
The uh.
You got that hang?
Yeah.
You should be, we could like.
She's not been involved in discussion up to now, so we're just gonna continue this over. Yeah, I think it's number one. Okay, so I mean, what am I actually different or?
Are you gonna? Yes, so that's the best I could just.
Okay, and then let's, would you like to take over and start with question number one?
Yeah, well first I'd like to make a statement. Gang, let's make a statement that this is not anything new for 2020, these are all same 2019 issues. And they have covered a significant length of time, but we got some restrooms back. So we're just tuning in to those questions, so this is still a 2019, 2072. If you believe that there are things that are completely missing from this version, the 2019 version, we have 2020, which more than many wants to work on it, but at the end of the year we'll work on another version. So, et cetera, okay. So the first one was that, um, uh, Mark had excerpted, Mark Rupp said excerpted a really lovely piece of text from the revised plan, whatever, yes, called. And it was, it's a, a, a bit of a poetic piece. And Cliff says, well, only sentiment, this is not necessary code, it would be more appropriate to be inserted in this. So there is that. So the question I was asked, is PRC, he question mark, keep removing the news that are in the plan whenever we work on it. So that's the question for the committee right now. What statement do?
I got it here, because Mark Rupp was just submitting that state by welcoming a meeting history. That would not be part of code, that would be a statement in the sub area plan, it's not having to be.
And Cliff said, it could be in there, it's just a statement, it doesn't have any teeth, it kind of like code, you know, condensed, so that he can argue a lot after a lot of particularly active views. So it probably shouldn't be in sub area plan, there's a version like this somewhere in the sub area plan too. So I was, I was. How can it be more appropriate?
Save it, save the language, put it in the sub area plan, we need to revise.
And I know Mark, I know Mark was, the tax payer's, uh, yeah, he discussed it at one point, but Mark was okay. He wasn't sure it should join, but he thought he was, so it was kind of a bit of a technical proposal for forcing that in.
I know, it's great to bring the idea forth, but as, as has PRI DC brought forth, that the sub area plan needs revising, so it's great that that is kept, the idea is kept alive.
Okay. I keep tracking my millions of drafts.
Here, also, you can come.
Oh, okay.
I would say to let, you know, how not keeping.
Okay, that's fine. Am I done?
Okay.
Okay, now that's, uh, three, three out.
Three out, okay.
Okay, we go to, to, to sub area plan in the future. Okay. I think that's, okay. There was, um, a lot of conversations about the idea of multiple storage sheds. And finally, Cliff got the head of, of.
Which code number was that?
One of the.
Which code number was that?
It was not code number, it was, it was part of all our discussion.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it was in regard to two hundred foot square foot sheds, which don't need a permit. But the question was, I'm always sure from getting one, you've only had one in that one, only one in that one. So we are proposing, can we have more than one? And, and there are plenty of issues to, to talk about there. Uh, but he got his guy and I probably have an email lurking here in my system, so I'm not trying to get his name, but he is really in charge of, um, the, uh, the, uh, not code permitting process, so it's a permitting code. And he says, oh, no, you can have one. But in this answer, though, that's a bunch of the questions, you can have one if it's on a, a, basically a residential lot that has a building on it, a permitted building. And I added into the, I actually added into our, our summary, which is going to be soon, but, um, that, uh, depending on, and this is something else, and it was explained very well. Depending on property, if you have a tiny, tiny, tiny lot, technically, you might not even be able to have room for one to have a storage shed. If you have a big lot and the leaf field is all, you could, he says, there's actually no limit, it's an accessory thing and accessory code. And, um, you might have to apply and might even get a code violation if there's no room. Who knows, uh, but it simply said, you can have more than one if there's room permit, just a room permit for the law.
Who made the next accessory use permit?
A accessory use permit, and so, um, that's what he has said, yeah. So, wait, wait, so this is not a code. This is a guideline, it's part of the permitting process. And Cliff recommended, um, it really doesn't need to be set anywhere, PDS responses, it really doesn't need to be set anywhere in 2072. It's based on existing code for the underlying zones, which put a limit on it as separate use.
So what the code actually says in the general code is you are allowed one two hundred square foot shed without a permit on a lot. If you want to have more than one two hundred square foot shed on your lot, it requires an accessory use permit to ensure that you are not over.
With the block size issues, the limitations, so, okay. And so basically, this whole section is now, it's sort of working to imply, but it's in code, it's in the processes. But we don't need to put it in 2072, so it's on.
I agree.
So for now, we.
Except that PDS recommendation to, uh, leave as is covered by existing code.
Three to zero to keep as a guideline on what we call it here.
Well, it says based on existing code in this response.
Based on existing code. It's one of the things that we put into our summary of the original, to make it more common sense to people. Something curious.
On this particular issue, because I would like to see some of the codes work towards cottage industry and people that come down and buy a property or get put up on shed. And I've seen a few issues that this has come up with. I think you might know Alison, Louise had a shed. And there was a time when she had Tom there staying there on his trailer, and he, they weren't allowed to have a shed. They got fined a bunch of money, and it was frustrating, and it was so, somebody low income could steal the property. It was not a building.
There was no point in building, there was actually two sheds, so they told her that she had to remove one of the sheds and could only have the one because there was no permit.
Yeah, and I've known other issues around the point, and just trying to work towards our special district, our special community, and trying to encourage tiny houses and trailers as long as it's a lot of green space, and to encourage septic, you know, approval, that this is something we may be, should be considering to allow. Thinking we're, we're, we're working towards cottage industry here rather than big monster hotels. You know, I think it's appropriate to think about this.
Right, it's warranted, it allows for that.
But, but you have to have, if you don't have a house, then you don't have.
You have an accessory use permit, and I think that's fair enough, because that, what was, if, if you didn't have that ruling in place, what would stop somebody from building nine of them?
Yeah, so that, that would be, so it'd be good to have a limit, not, not house.
Well, the limit is one, if you want anymore, you simply get an accessory use permit. And then there's, then there's no limit, and you can't have nine. If your county will, will issue you a permit for your ninth, two hundred square foot shed, then you can have it.
But if, if you don't have a house, you can't have a shed, like everything around one.
That's because the plan department said, it's been terribly used in other parts of Lockton County, I don't think it's got any violations here in Rockton TV. But it's been terribly used in other places where people, you know, keep adding sheds, connect them all together, people are living in, we can have all the food, you know, it's not for occupancy at all, you can't have electricity, you can't have enough plumbing to be a resident.
You can't have plumbing, I have a, exactly, pump house, so there's a specific way to, for a pump house.
And we asked about pump house, we asked about that.
Yeah, because that's not well, so that's a little bit different.
Well, he said, well, that's simple, just because it has a shed, pump house shed, has plumbing, you're not using it for residence, if you were sleeping next to your pump, then you'd be in one.
Yeah, I just thought I'd bring it up because it's a living, and because also my eighty year old neighbor that was staying in his trailer every summer and got fined a lot, and this was another issue that kept coming up. And he's not going to build a place, but you have, you know, if, if you can encourage people to, to build septic, then we're hiring local tradespeople and, and we're encouraging that, and maybe someday they would build. But not to force people into building big houses, but less tiny homes, sticky.
The current code, which we left alone, allows an RV with a septic, a, a, a proper septic, can pay forty hundred bucks, which is permanent, so one time only, and then you can have, um, one shed. Uh, but you can't live there other than four months out of the year, so.
And that's why I think it's kind of, doesn't work for our community, and that's why the special, this 2072 is, is great, because we could put in things like that.
Yeah, let's, let's bring that up for the, for the next iteration, but we're gonna have to get more, more information, may have possible, the idea. And I'd love to work with you on my taxes, definitely down with the basic.
I don't want you guys to think, but I think it's important.
Yeah, we'd like to see that, be able to have lots, but if there's already a rule for five, eight, if you have five acres, you can put multiple homes on it.
And even with Alison needing, um, workers, you may have to bring workers, because we're, we're running out of cheap housing for workers. But it might bring possibilities for that, too.
Shed?
No. Tiny homes.
Oh, tiny homes for private.
Yeah.
Shed, you have a couple of sheds.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay, the current question is the PDS suggestion, and that was what was on the table for discussion, and we have agreed that we're going to accept Cliff's suggestion.
Okay, then that's one of our conflicts, and I know Alison's got to stop this here, but I, I guess what he's saying is in the resort commercial district, you got confused, because it seemed like we were, uh, doing, allowing the current permitting of up to sixteen in resort commercial, but not more than that unless there's a conditional permit. So, um, did we want to have a limit on that? And that's why he said under the resort commercial district, um, that there is any number of units under permitting. He always said that because it says down here that, uh, it's, uh, it could easily change to distinguishing the two levels, but yeah, when it appears that PRC wishes to allow, which has a permitted use and not a conditional use. So I guess the language, however, moved into his mind, seemed a little confusing. So this is the most substantive thing I'm gonna talk about tonight, because we don't want to screw this up, right?
Now, I'm gonna give everybody.
Okay.
Um, I read the sub area plan over again, because of course, the sub area plan has to take precedent. Any code that is written in reference has to follow the rules of the sub area plan. Well, in the sub area plan, I'm sure five point one two, in stating that a, that review of chapter twenty seventy two, Lockton County's only code for consistency with provisions in the revised plan of the sub area plan, which means that twenty seventy two must follow in the lines of the sub area plan. In the sub area plan, we have in three point forty, point two, encourage bed and breakfasts in small lodges for overnight guests. Three point thirty, inherit the creation of bed and breakfast, small hotels and lodges with means of providing, um, transient accommodation. Four point three, point five, sustainable tourism centered at the promotion of annual festivals and development of smaller hotels and lodges catering to multi-day visitors, which means nothing inside of twenty seventy two can limit that.
And I think that's fine, honestly, because it's still gonna come down to it having to be a conditional use permit. So even if somebody wants to build a, a, of some of the multi-units.
It's part of this, it's part of this permitted use.
Well, so the problem is, is so basically, it doesn't need to be in there at all to reference anything to do with hotels, hotels or lodging, to diminish their use under resort commercial or small town commercial, you can't do it. Basically, they, they fall under standard code, because you cannot, if the sub area plan calls for you to have that as an encouragement, to have that for the community, you cannot write something against that. Just like Cliff Strong said, when we had suggestions about the code, he said, you know what? Great idea, but that doesn't follow in line with the sub area plan, so therefore, we cannot put that in there.
So this, this superstition.
This happens here to twenty seventy two.
Right.
So any mention of hotels, motels in either them being conditional administrative allowed doesn't even need to be in twenty seventy two, because they have the inherent. You can't limit them.
Well, we're trying to, you're, you're saying maybe that they, yeah, they were, about whatever issue you brought up, if you mind me, so we have to be consistent with, correct, we have to be, twenty seventy two cannot be inconsistent with the sub area plan, so we have to change our wording about making it consistent.
Right, so.
I don't, I'm not trying to argue that this type of language isn't consistent.
Well, because the standard code states, in resort commercial, it is a permitted use up to sixteen rooms.
Okay.
Anything over sixteen rooms requires a conditional use permit. So you don't need to put that in twenty seventy two.
Because it already exists.
Because it already exists.
Yeah.
But what it also states is that in twenty seventy two, where in small town commercial, you have put it that it has to be a conditional use.
No, we haven't.
Well, it didn't, well, it didn't, it didn't, not the.
I think in a different section, I think in a different district, in a different zone, we're getting that condition. In resort commercial, yeah, resort commercial, we have a permitted use.
Right, but in, in small town commercial, in twenty seventy two, it's listed as a condition.
Right, that's probably right, yeah.
Right, which is not in line with the sub area plan. The sub area plan calls for the encouragement of those, and in standard code allows for those uses in resort commercial or small town.
And in our small town commercial, which is Gulf, a very, very part of Tahiti, there is a septic ability anywhere on any of those properties, even putting a four bedroom hotel.
Yes.
Let alone a septic.
But you think it's important that if we're going to reference the sub area plan in limiting what we're able to do, we need to be consistent in following the sub area plan across the board. So if we're gonna say the sub area plan limits what can be done in small town commercial, because this is what it states as far as this, well, then we also need to be consistent in saying, you know, in three or four sections of the sub area plan, it says that we need to encourage this, well, then we need to not, you know, we need to be consistent.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so again, under conditional use, and again, the small town protocol says hotels, motels and timeshare condominiums of any number of units.
Correct.
And so Cliff ruled that it's not, right, or clearly, I guess, and so that's why he would have, and then the agreement for actual resort, um, I went back a little. And then that, the permitted uses, oh fifty, oh fifty one, hotels, motels, condominiums of any number of units. I, I, I think we should just read that, uh, as a suggestion, because it's consistent, and it seems to be consistent with the.
I see, personally, I would, because then again, you're overriding existing code, because saying of any number of units.
You, you wouldn't leave out any number, it wouldn't put a number in, it wasn't put a.
I would put it in there at all.
Not in the language hotel, hotel.
She doesn't need to be in there at all, because.
Obviously, it doesn't, it was in there in the old twenty seven, it would be current.
Yeah, so you scratched it. You redlined.
Oh, five one, it already covered the code.
Well, I'm, I'm.
It wasn't in the original oh five one, just, just bed, breakfast establishments and bed, breakfast in's were in the original allowed one. If an unconditional use, it say hotels, motels, condominiums or timeshares in any zone, it's totally conditional. That might not be the issue.
Exactly, I know this is an old one, but I brought this up for that very reason. It's, uh, first line of conditional uses in the original one.
Oh, conditional use, it just remains expressly from it. Oh, one five one, you're actually right, hotels, motels, timeshare condominiums.
In other, that would be.
In a conditional, if that's under conditional use, and we try to add it to permitted uses.
For resort commercial.
For resort commercial.
Right, and there's that in the.
Right, so it's, it's kind of, it's a different language. Because standard code for resort commercial already states sixteen rooms. And you do not want to override existing code by saying you can have more than that.
Right, but Cliff said, he said that it's sometimes, I guess, in the processing of things, um, in legal flight to just processing things, it's good to do repetition in a special district, if it's consistent, you know, so that, there's one question. But then the second question is, that, that, that in there means that the movers and shakers of the special district, um, I had to follow that and wanted to have it in there. So that was just a kind of a process there, to, to avoid having to revisit the issue, I guess I would suggest we end up with a, a two-pronged, uh, whatever, two, two approaches that we come out of this discussion with, go back and put it and say, we would do that. Basically, a thousand is right, but you don't need this at all, we could just eliminate it, because it's, it's allowed under county. Counties are, are, the basic, the basic rules.
Yeah, eliminate.
Or why not do it? A little thing, but if somebody, he doesn't think the issue's right, then we, then we come back to the question of, if we want to include it, would we leave it as a number, if we, if we have to leave it? Well, if you leave it with no, nothing, no number specified, because again, the county code might cover it. More, more specified, that also has nothing to do with it. I, I personally would limit it to the, to the amount of, up to sixteen, rather than this unlimited number. I mean.
I, I.
I think, I think that is quite, sort of consistent, if you would get up that much, but maybe someone, maybe someone at this point could actually. But there's, yeah, there's, uh, small town commercial and resort commercial, a very, a very one of those zones that the marina is the only property that might get away with it if they would allow it to tie into that existing system, right? Well, we don't have any communication, but I might have a few, this is, uh, this is. But, uh, yeah, something else, I think we should structure it, I'm just trying to have a solution that allows us to keep on moving forward, even if, I think when we get back to Cliff's.
We can still, we can get a list back because of our decision. My decision is to ask him that.
That's true, I, I would always consider, if we, if we, if we prove everything, and we have. The main thing we're asking him, that he says, yeah, it's not, it was COVID, and he says, no, it's not, it's not, it's not, right, then I already have it now, but we'll be visiting this again, and the other, the special, whatever.
But it seems to be, I mean, what you're saying already, which is, and what Austin said, would be what it says, RC's on the list already.
So I can give you the exact code if you want to look it up, is twenty point six, four point zero five zero. Permitted uses in the RC zone under point zero five three, restaurant lodging types uses hotels, motel, timeshare condominiums and accommodations sixteen or less, needing units, is standard.
Right. Right, so, okay, so to me, that, to me, the simplest approach to this, aside from, and it's the same of small town commercial.
We don't even have to.
Not, not, not. Okay, not more than sixteen. I would, well, it's, we, we, either we get rid of it, because it's a dummy, what we have is a, that's always the thing.
As long as the, the language is like that to that standard code.
Which is actually what I thought, putting aside, we mentioned the current, I thought we actually did use before Cliff proposed.
We did, because we took the language right around.
Or, or this day, so either we try and we vote to eliminate this section, open to one basically, because it's already covered.
What do you feel that bed and breakfasts are? I think we, it was bed and breakfast, it had hotels and hotels, so I think we need.
Hotels, motels are covered in current code, though that phrase is already.
No, motels, motels are, are covered under current code, bed and breakfasts are not. So we need to leave the bed and breakfast portion in.
Right, there's one, two, it's fifty one, two, that property, you gotta remove or put back sixteen.
Or just make oh fifty one just that, in resort commercialistic bed and breakfast, yeah.
Right, which is what the original one said, we leave that, but the reference to.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And what, what is, what, sorry, what is the county code, the regular code in sixty four fifty?
Restaurant lodging types uses hotels or motels and timeshare condominiums accommodating sixteen or less.
Right, so it has a number of them, it has the types, right? I mean, the R numbers have more things listed in there than they have here, that has to be removed.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we can take out fifty one, two, permitted uses.
Yep.
And just leave it the way it was. But we also need to talk about when you get to conditional uses about.
Yeah, we're in the permitted uses right now, okay.
Three to zero on eliminating oh fifty one, two.
All right, three to zero. When we're all ready, we get rid of this provision. Yeah, I'm saying we're trying to, well, type, it's whether we're. Come on, sure, we're open, like I said, you know, like, eliminate number two.
Yeah.
And eliminate, uh, number oh fifty, one, parentheses, two.
Yep.
Okay, and then, and then we do, uh, oh, and oh, yeah. Amazing, three people can agree on something.
We've already talked about these issues, that nausea, and tried to come up with the right thing, now we're just finding what we're, we need to polish.
Just, let's just figure out how easy this is, because you know that, you used to think that, one guy, we had six genders, and now we think it has about fifty six thousand.
Okay, that's, this is special, that's not.
Just to be aware of how hard this is to agree on.
Okay, accessory use.
Okay, accessory use, yeah, we're on to the next thing, okay. So, and then, hold on, I'm gonna do this. Okay, we, okay, just to honor the, this committee, we debated this, and what we said is, it's not fair to try to limit the total number of containers, if really, the essence of what's going on here is that you're saying that if more has three or four companies wanting to keep a container and a truck, which is another thing that we're dealing with, then they should each be allowed that. And so it, it, the, the language we're trying to say is the total of, of three or four units for the whole lot is very problematic, and kind of blows out the idea of, of this, this permanent idea of a business. So, um, I think that, that, that the last conclusion we had, I think, was kind of correct, which is that, um, no, there's, you can have two per business. That's sort of two things, right? Yeah, except that we discovered, oh, it's another code. Yeah, yeah. You know, it was so. Cliff was responding to our question. Yeah. What if there were three businesses on this site, and each had two? Yeah, it's lower pending. Thirty six units. And so he would propose to, to, to accomplish that, to change our English to instead say a maximum of two storage containers or some more, property storage units for a lot of accessories for. There's a lot. Lots of you, so Cliff is proposing that, I, I, we really talked about this, and all five of us were here, and, and, uh, I, I went back and put myself on it, and I think, okay, I don't think it's fair to limit the total, I think it was fair, it's this process permanent and the screening, and it has to be permitted, because it's not, it's not. We're only talking, we're only talking about the language, I think we're all, we're all agreeing, if there are three businesses like on, at fourteen eighty, then they could have six containers, if people, if they want one or two.
And it's probably a screen.
And if it's a screen, all conditions are that, it could be six if there are three businesses that are trying to do it. The question is, does the language actually accomplish that, or does it inadvertently say two, hope, does it inadvertently say two total? And I thought, well, he was trying to make sure that, he, he mapped right in his answer, but his, what he was trying to address was making sure that we didn't inadvertently limit three businesses to only be able to have two.
Then why don't we change the line and translate it into accessory two for each?
Yeah, two, yeah, and I mean, I think this is not, unfortunately.
No, it doesn't fix anything.
No, it doesn't fix anything.
It doesn't fix anything.
A legal change, our own language to refuse to retain ours or other similar temporary storage units for each permitted business on the same lot.
Well, he liked it, the language there, it was the issue of, are you guys aware that that could be six containers for three businesses? That's really what he's saying. And I thought, see, you want. It's not, I mean, he may be wrong in his answer, but it's not, he said that, we raised the question, did you even know that? Yeah. If there were three outside, so you want six? Right. And he said, six, if that's something that we want to do. Well, uh, maybe not just for these, maybe he means addressed in the negative, what I'm trying to ask. Yes, a limit, he's offering us Michael's limit. Okay. And I think limiting is unfair actually, other. I mean, that is, if you either say a lot or you do it, I'm never suggesting.
Just make it clear, because if accessory to a, that might be difficult to define.
Well, it needs to be accessory, but it needs to be accessory to each permitted business.
Okay.
So if, if George or somebody.
To each, so if the word A to a permitted business, say each.
Yeah, that'd be all the question.
And then that's pretty darn clear.
Yeah. Each. So, what do you know? Sorry, I'm very modest. Are we all ready? Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You said two containers per business.
For business, so you got George, you guys, um, um, some people, and maybe somebody else, and they could each have ten containers, because it's all on that, at that point, that's what it's for, that could be a factor, that's what it's like.
Okay, but if I wanted a container and Chris.
You can have two.
Christie needs a container, now we've got, how many businesses though?
You could, you could have ten.
Each permitted business.
Each permitted.
It has to be a very, very practical log that I have to frame through you.
It's a screen, I feel.
Well, I'm not really, I just, I usually. Preferably.
It's fifty feet.
Yes.
Fifty feet, so basically, at the back of the building, that's the screen.
See, I think that's.
Okay. I want to, here's a kind of business committee feedback. Okay, so we'll, we'll go on that. Now, let's talk about. Oh, yeah, that was a lot. Okay, here's a topic that's not, well, the question is, can part of you, your practice is all also a business, Doug?
Shouldn't that happen?
Part of the issue of Doug's vehicle is, is podding rack, being part of, it was not storage containers, it's a business vehicle, and can business vehicles anywhere you park at your business if you, if you, if you were a rent, if you rent, if you rent a closet to have.
If he rents an office space and part of his lease says that he has one or two vehicle parking spaces for his business, is part of his leased office space, then.
Okay, so that's between him and, and Horn.
Yeah, but before the out parcel became an out parcel, there was the, the other shipping place there, uh, Desi Bailey had her Remax office there, the.
Everybody gets.
They had, they just put signs up.
It's one thing to drive out there, park your car here.
Yeah, but you also, you have extra amount of space in the parking lot for your business, so, you know, as long as they're on wheels, it's not.
But the one that was counted, it's sort of, was not, not that part, it was kind of a, he probably had a business application maybe, but.
Yeah.
That's the big problem, so maybe.
The funny thing about that one is, Health Department has permitted Doug to have his container there as long as he put the lock locks up and have it aligned with, with straw bales and, and everything, so he's already permitted to be there by one A, you see, but yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're. And God, we're not even.
Well, but here's what's important, way down, down there towards P K, we have the screening portion. And, um, um.
Yeah.
So Kenny, listen, Kenny, else.
I don't want to say, keep talking here, this is what.
No, sorry, it is. You're on YouTube.
How about that?
Okay, anyway, way down under screening is, uh, the commercial third vehicle trailers for truck containers showing screen for a little bit, so we were realized, Steve and I, wait a second, is that not inconsistent with, that really what we're saying here in this thing with, uh, uh, two or more storage containers, we're not really talking about vehicles, there's, does it seem to be a limit on vehicles? Because we know there's a big concern about commercial coverage throughout, hey, robots, and then yet, allowing it if it's screened, that is good, but are we allowing it in the, um, along with the storage containers, or should this one or two strictly be third? No, I think it's okay, because based on what Kenny was saying, if that's approved, essentially, some, we're, we're just thinking, well, it's going to be screened, so we have storage, we just trust we got behind that.
Two.
Okay. That's not.
Quite business.
Yeah. I thought, I thought, okay, we didn't have any special considerations for trucks. Okay, so we won't vote on that, yeah, I know, vehicles is okay as implied. Ready to go next?
Yeah.
Uh, regarding provision of facilities, okay, so sub area plant, I mean, who loves this person, uh, he loves it, provision, you got provision back, yeah, okay, all right, um. Then, uh, um, uh, because in the sub area plant, I've got another reason, and, uh, Business Council, Indian Business Council, right, like one of the biggest things that should be worked on, because it kind of deals with everything, is that, uh, those kinds of facilities are prohibited, um, anyway, so we can't make them official, it's a, you know, so at least for twenty nineteen version, they have to be prohibited, and I guess there's more time to be able to talk and work on the provision, so, um. So we don't even need to vote on this, it's just something we don't change, right? But I, I think I don't need to vote on it, we'll vote of, of, no change.
Change is okay, so.
Yeah, no, vote on no change, okay, and which is what, we're done. It, it was a move back to vision, but it is, so we have, we have.
Yeah.
But it was a discussion point. Well, it's because.
Let's remember, triangle hearts stop at seven.
Yeah. So. Okay, move that thing. Yeah, where's that?
Oh.
Actually, we have.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I have the files, okay, so this was, uh, the reason, this kind of fell between, because I remember there was five people here, and when we talked about it, we had to vote, it was sort of like, I think it went three to two or whatever, um, or four, four to one.
On the side, yeah.
It really, it, it, it was white lips, and the thing was, is that I had one of the tech players, so I had the back of tech players, and we had a little vote on it, I remember my, Mark on this yesterday, yeah, we had to have a little vote, and, uh, we talked about all three issues with the signs, the heights, and the layers and all that, and so tech players wanted to keep those two, but were willing to open it back up to color, and so.
And same with, yeah, Chamber was too.
Yeah.
They just.
And if Chamber told us they were, so it is an issue of, of, um, and Tessa's not here, you can't vote, but, but Tessa would probably, did you get a vote on this? True.
Yeah, we already voted on it.
Okay.
Tessa said at that meeting, you couldn't, the, the member said, we actually said a chromatic was fine, and we actually said a motion was fine, as long as it's timed it.
Very.
Lost on that.
I wanted the movement too.
I tried, yeah, I wanted the movement too, but I was a little.
On a time goes.
I tried.
Okay, so then, then it's vote to, uh.
I don't, I don't, I don't vote, I, I don't want.
Color.
I don't want, no, I don't like the side of the corner, I would actually attract people's attention.
You really don't like Fred's side of the corner with the cute little.
I don't like, I don't want anything to try to stop that corner, but anyway, aside from that, no, I don't.
You don't like my red, you're just trying, I think it was a, a.
Well, I, I'd like to, to establish grandfather. I don't like their grandfather anything.
More nature.
I like, I would, I would avoid trying to fill up the town, or fill up golf road, potentially where it's full, although one of the businesses that we hope someday will exist on both old road and that will show the light, that they all have their model colored, uh, with sign, because it is a little heavy sign, it's not why you got it set that people have, other places, a memory, or a letter, or other things they come to do.
That's what it's signs.
They have plenty, they have plenty of outlets for color, but I was talking, the street needs to be.
Yeah, I agree.
Like in those days, a little still a, no, no movement, in the green movement, but that's good, so then we don't need, make it into a, into a strip, part of that. And it, so that would be a massive worry, the no animations, a big one, and no fires, both these. Those are. And then six, where it don't, not immediately have a law, there was no, uh, permitting for electronic gas price sign, and, and I was trying to represent somehow, because the kind of, it's part of Chamber, is to, uh, for businesses, it makes no sense that people have to want to do this, if it changes, but it just be. Right, they can do that in white, they don't get to do that.
They can do it in white, not in colors. So, but all the other things, people seem really like, kind of, that's the only one that seems to be able to disagree on.
Well, I.
But I think that you're right, the, according to the notes at the bottom here, we did vote on these already, and the achromatic did get voted, that's actually, we could come out, so it just needs, you know, but the, but not eliminate, not motion.
Yeah, because what it just wouldn't say is shall be achromatic.
Yeah.
Which is stated.
No, one minute, six inches.
Right, no, I just, well, if somehow Barack was against, what could we do, we don't want to do that.
I think it's okay to keep the white, but Fred put that in, uh, um, he and I actually talked to the sign expensive, because it was well, and he said, it was really hard to get white on these at the time, and it's so much easier now, purely. Uh, those were, that's kind of harsh, and they don't change color, because you should notice, is that most good sign systems have a chip in there that, that sends sunlight, and so when, when it gets dark, they reduce the illumination on, so it's not so clearly. And the L E's, the white L E's now look, not like little dots, but look like, you know, letters, okay, like painted letters, illuminated letters, and it's all different now, I mean, it, it's been a couple years now, and it changed everything.
That's all about achromatic, that's.
That's why achromatic can work, but, um, okay.
Really trying to, please attention on the side of the test, you don't really want her, where is the gas station, where is anti-ban, where is the, the power station? We, we know where our businesses are, we won't call any color that additionally grabs, but I mean, I, I would, just, just give me a nod that you aren't going to change the mind.
It's not going to change my mind, I like the color of the hat.
Well, my, my group says they want to eliminate the achromatic.
Okay, well, that's two to one.
Okay. So remove the wording, that's the strict, the achromatic.
Okay, two to one.
And there's no wording that talks about, in this particular version.
Takes away from that.
Sorry?
Takes away from that.
I don't know what we said.
I don't see any wording in here, or is it another paragraph where we talk about, um, motion?
I think their animation was, uh, it may not be the part of the copy, but it's.
Okay. Yeah, it might be. So maybe it's completely, it's only, I see what you're using.
Well, I may have not tasted.
Yes, so you just did move, yeah, single face sign shall not exceed to get poison per, shall not rotate or otherwise be in motion, so that already exists, deep, or probably.
Maybe you saw before it changed, he changed it for more of my life, or he suggested, or somebody's, a slideshow of one thing, it's still electronic.
Well, slideshow is motion, that's animation.
No, whatever.
See, the marketplace is allowed to do it, because they're grandfather, that's what I don't like about it, because the marketplace is a lot.
No, actually, marketplace signs broke, and they're not allowed to have a putback.
Yeah, same. The laws and what.
But when it was operational, it was legal, because it was grandfather.
See, the difference is, the original code got approved by, by, was there, you know, gas station, gas station prices themselves were like, oh, little cubes, so about one letter, one number. And Fred, okay, started using video screen, where he can do the same thing, so, okay, that's fine, let's step the dynamics, and County agreed that now, isn't right, Fred, is enough, they believe to just go, I just want to, hey, maybe change the gas station, they can change what's on there, but they're not changing it out, because on video, basically it's about to be like a slow, a slow shot, a slow slide.
Say that.
So they're allowing that the time goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if there's code about the timing, it just is.
Probably enough to change it when the press changes.
Yeah. I, I guess.
It's not, it's not a slideshow, it's not automatic.
But if you have our time, we're, we're.
Oh, yeah. Remove P D S reports. Good.
Okay.
Nothing to do.
Okay, parking. Okay, parking, uh, probably. Yeah, that was just me telling, um, Cliff that, that we don't want more, because we got pushback completely to block him, it, it was our idea that there's not a, really no legal speed parking except a little bit at all throughout my travels, but actually what he says is, if you can park between the fog line and your car falling into the ditch, with fog line as the outer lines, you're legit, but not if you have that, when you have so many ditches, it might be as outside speed parking, okay, but that's because it's physical, it's a physical problem, um, there are other places, like here in your pro, that's prohibited, nobody ever gets tickets, but, uh, it is prohibited, uh, most of, not all, but last in piece there is, is allowed, so we'd like to work on that again, and we had some real ideas about that, and also that we'll want to just do pro, but we ran out of time with public works to do that, so, um, so basically, Cliff says, it's not like the market, it's like the public works.
Except the cops ran around, uh, the last time we had a garden, uh, tour, they ran antiquated people.
Oh, yeah, it's a good part.
Yeah, people came to my store, they did, because they were on the garden tour, and they were parking on the sides of the roads, and they come out after having a job time, and it all got ticketed.
Yeah, but some of them weren't parked properly.
I can tell you some of them weren't parked properly.
They were all two wheels on the road.
I was going home knocking on doors, you got to move your car, that's a hundred dollar fine all day long.
Okay.
Well, that's a part of the program, I can see, I just.
Where was that?
Down pretty day road. Down pretty day road, there was a lot of it there, um, because the cars were like two wheels, they were on the side of the, the, some right faces in the road, right?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Oh, uh, we may also, uh, all five of us are, are, we've done, okay, we have some on.
Well, we got all the. I mean, can we, can we talk about other?
Well, you have, it's part, it's part of the agenda, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, my question was, are, are you going to do a sign, or are you going to do?
We're filming it, yeah, the free, free hours, me, you, and somebody else, and, uh, we worked on this, we got like six provisions into this, thinking about a visit of sense, are we telling the truth in the sense of what we've already agreed to, in the committee versus just, I'm just kind of wishful thinking, and you could, you could have a little wishful thinking, and say, well, we'd like to someday, so on, so, so it's got a little bit of that language in it, but it's, it's, it's mostly pretty much straightforward, so, um, you just have to go read it.
Okay.
And, and, um, Tessa can send me a copy, she received it today, you know, and, um, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Are you going to update with what you've just put in, so that everybody's up to the same speed, or, or some people?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, that's a good, I'm gonna go and carefully check what we just wanted on, against the, the summary document, and, and then I'll send it out, yeah, I'll send it out to camp, but it was meant to go mainly to the five, the two hours of the committee, and then the committee is, is like a committee heads, a group heads, committee, and then the committee is, is, like, the committee has, a group has, if they like it, like Allison, can, can then consent it to more of their people, Mark can consent it to more of the tax payers, et cetera, and then they get, I want, I want to try to restrict this send out, just guys, people, on the night, or we'd like to restrict this to construct the criticism, back to trying to make this document work for all of us, and then it can go to the public, or go to a greater level of, of distribution. So I don't think we should forward, even the version under revised, to the general public, so, you know, we have one more week, um, when the, uh, the, the committee member groups, in such.
General public, right, or is it for the general public?
But that's what it's for, we didn't say, it's for the general public, it's meant to be common sense, relatively easy, my wife read it, she said, I still don't understand it, like, no, I can read it. So, okay.
Maybe we need to approve.
Yeah, maybe we need to do more common sense type of, um, if I'm still a little bit too early.
I'm only a couple paragraphs in, and it's pretty good common sense language.
Yeah, I think it worked on that a lot, I think it was.
It's a lot better than this.
Yes.
So, will we, the whole thing, either before my term expires?
I don't think it, I don't think it.
I was only hours, it's.
How many hours? No. I'm on Friday, Friday, the January three first is, the term expires.
Yeah, okay, I, I will look at this, and I'm going to reset.
And then I'll still be one of the public, I can still, I can make suggestions, yeah, that's right.
So I'll send it, in lieu of Tessa being busy, I'll send it to you tonight, okay, and then, and then, um, into Mark, and to David, and, uh, so.
Volunteer.
Can I make a request that, that notices for the meeting, come on, on the call, come up just next story?
I sent it to the board, I don't know why.
Oh, okay, that's your volunteer.
Oh.
You know, next story, you get to put it out yourself.
Of course, it was me.
They're, they're volunteers, and I just, I'm, I'm going to stand up all day long for those poor volunteers.